Good evening, everyone. We will go ahead and get started.
Yes, a charge for that.
Good evening, everyone. If you could all take your seats so we can get started. Thank you.
I'm a business guy, so I got a chance.
Good evening.
I have a gavel.
Do we have a gavel? Okay. I might actually need it today. And now we don't need it. All right, great. If, uh, thank you, everyone. Um, if we can go ahead and get started with the roll call.
Cohen.
Here.
Mendoza.
Here.
Hilpern.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Chow.
Here.
Tanya Booty.
Here.
Cartha.
Here. Um, Joey, you've got the motion for the approval of the meeting agenda?
Yeah, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Are we making adjustments?
Second.
Owen.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Hilpern.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Chow.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Cartha.
Yes. Um, we will start off the evening with superintendent and board remarks.
Thank you very much, and welcome, everyone, to the board meeting tonight. I want to, um, I want to start with some reflections on what occurred in the world last week. Uh, I don't know if many people know this, but I spent with my family over seven months working in the Ministry of Education in New Zealand. And, uh, I worked in a section of the New Zealand ministry that was devoted to the academic achievement of Maori children, the indigenous people of New Zealand. And I got to know many people, and I got to love that country. And, uh, the violence and horrible activities of the other day break all of our hearts. And, uh, so we could be 8,500 miles away, but that's just as close as the church in Charleston, or the synagogue in Pittsburgh, or the mosque in Christchurch. And, uh, I think we, we as educators, we as committed citizens, need to stand tall against any sort of violence like this, and especially violence while people are doing what is in their right to do, which is to pray in a safe place. And, uh, the colleagues that, uh, I worked with in New Zealand who were Maori professionals would typically, and I won't do this, they would typically start a meeting like this with song, usually a song about love, um, with a ukulele or, uh, an instrument that was more traditional of the South Pacific. And then effectively start with a prayer. And, uh, and again, in the world of church and state, we don't typically do that, but it's something that's actually really important. So, um, I ask, uh, that all of us think about what we can do to make the world a better place for our children and for children around the world. I ask that we reach out to our friends and neighbors who are Muslim, and that we not only say that Islamophobia is not welcome here, but we prove it. And we not only say that, um, racism is not welcome here, but we prove it, and we create spaces, or antisemitism, or all of the ways that people hurt and damage each other. And in the tradition of doing a, an opening that would be sacred, if we could take a minute or two, or just a few minutes, moments, um, in silence to offer our, our prayers across the ocean, but our prayers down the block to Morton Grove where there are our friends who are praying in a mosque, um, and anywhere else in, in our country or our world. So if we can take a moment. Thank you. And if you ever get to New Zealand, there's a wonderful place at the nor, on the northern tip of the North Island where the Tasman Sea and the Pacific come together. And it's actually where the Maori elders wish those who have just died their best wishes as they go off into the spirits. There's a three islands about 70 miles away called Three Kings Islands. And it's a very wonderfully, beautifully spiritual place. And so, as I close my eyes and think, I think of that. Um, and I think about, again, all the work we have to do in a educational institution like District 65 to make the world a better place. Um, we often don't celebrate the joy of being part of an education system where we do all sorts of really fun things in the educational process. So I want to take a moment and celebrate what just happened over at SHUET the other day, both the opening night and closing night of The Wizard of Oz. And, uh, I had the great joy of going on opening night to The Wizard of Oz. And what was so spectacular about this performance was that there were over 200 children who were, yeah, students, children who were engaged, whether it was in the cast, in the crew, in the orchestra, um, helping in the front, in the front side of the house, also the entire staff. This is a celebration every three years of a, of a great play. The staff, and then community members, parents and caregivers, and then the proud parents, caregivers, and grandparents who are sitting in the audience. Um, so I just want to salute not only SHUET, but all of our schools that do wonderful, wonderful fine arts and theater presentations throughout the year. Um, and I can attest, The Wizard of Oz was just spectacular. It was really quite fun to, to go to last week, um, and to celebrate the, the wonderful acting in the south part of Evanston. And the final part of my, um, announcements is that spring break is a-coming, um, and we will be, uh, not in school, not in session, from March 25th through March 29th. And we will reconvene, um, after this Friday on Monday, April 1st. And so I wish all well, and we hope to see even a little bit more of spring arriving for our spring break.
Do we have any board comments?
Yes, so, uh, just to add to the, to the well wishes for spring break, I think everyone's just about ready. Um, I know I am. I wanted to, um, thank the work of the Wellness Committee for the, for District 65, who the, in partnership with the YMCA, is inviting all District 65 staff to six free entrance, um, admissions to the Magaw YMCA as part of their March Madness, um, from now to April 8th. So thank you to Magaw YMCA for offering that, and for the District 65 Wellness Council for making that happen. Additionally, um, our, our wonderful green team, uh, in District 65 is going to be hosting a 10-second film festival. They're looking for entries for the month, the month of April. So I think it's something, if you're going to be around here, or wherever you're going to be during spring break, something that you can put together, a 10 to 10 to 12-second video about how you reduce, reuse, or recycle in your daily life. So the, the submissions are going to be accepted, um, through the 10secondfilmfestival.com website until April 26th. And, uh, for more information on District 65 Green Team initiatives, you can check them out tomorrow at the Civic Center at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I wanted to share two things. Um, and thank you, Paul, for sharing that very, you know, sentimental, um, view of that particular, uh, horror lack that happened, um, across the ocean. Um, and again, some, some of the work that we really have to do in regards to, you know, transform hate and eliminate it, is happening here in, in Evanston. And, um, you know, I was lucky enough, and I've been lucky enough in the past two years, my wife and I, to organize, uh, an event called We Are DAWs, Somalis DAWs. And I see my DAWs community here, representing, uh, love that you're here. And you're here for a very good reason, and I'm sure you'll, we'll hear about it. But, uh, that event, um, again, we, what we did is we, it's our multicultural night. And many of our schools have multicultural nights. Um, and to me, um, you know, having been part of trying to plan it, you know, I'm very, try to be very deliberate in, in regards to making sure that we call all families and then, and reach out to families who haven't been reached out to before. And our PTA does that, too. We really try to be very cognizant and really push for, to get folks that we just usually don't get. Um, and, uh, we, we hired Mariachi Donar Nurfo, who's, uh, who's an Evanstonian. Uh, and we're being very deliberate about, you know, people here representing who they are and, and being proud of themselves. So I saw children from, you know, dressed in the national dress from Somalia, Ethiopia. Uh, I had curated the music. I'm, I'm a DJ on the side for folks who don't know, uh, and electronic musician, but, um, I curated, uh, the music for all, all the different countries that are represented in our, in our, in our school. And, uh, I had several people come up to me and say, "Well, you know, I can't believe, you know, why are you, how are you playing this song? Like, I, I, how do you know about this song?" I'm like, "Well, I know that you, you exist. Like, I know that you're here." Um, there was a little girl who came up to me, she's like, "You know, I hear this song, I played a Haitian song." And a Haitian girl came to me, she's like, "You know, that, that song, we hear that a lot in my house." I'm like, "Okay, well, that's good." Uh, and at the very end of the day, uh, you know, it was incredible time. We had folks from Jamaica, there was great food, there was dancing, kids were, again, uh, it was just an incredible time. And to me, uh, that, that's the core of what we're trying to do, is that we, we want to make sure that all of you are acknowledged, that, that you all belong, um, that, uh, there's been, that we as a community haven't always acknowledged all of our members, uh, in this community. And I think, um, the equity work that we have embarked upon, um, and previous boards have worked on as well, uh, has to lead up to that point where people see themselves recognized and say, "Hey, you know what? That's my song." Or, "Hey, that, that, you know, that's me, that, that I'm seeing here, I'm hearing." Uh, because at the end of the day, that, that's where we want to get. And I think that, that's, um, a lofty goal, but it's something that I think we, we work at, and it's hard. Uh, it's not easy, but to see moments like that where people are represented and it feel appreciated that they're seeing it, is, is what we need to strive for constantly as educators, as board members, and as community members in general. So that's one thing. Uh, second thing, uh, we're moving into the testing season. Um, and, um, this is, so, I have, um, sent, I sent the letter out to my principal, uh, at SHUET, and then to my principal, uh, in, in DAWs, and we, I, we have refused. We don't opt out, uh, as, you know, you can't opt out from standardized testing. But we refused, uh, for the fifth time, uh, the, uh, the annual standardized test that the state gives. Now, it's called the IAR, but it's the same thing. Uh, to me, I think it's a, it's a statement, uh, which I'm teaching my children that, you know, again, if we continue to get measures or, or try to get measured by tests that are really, don't, don't really give us a good sense of who we are and what we're learning, uh, then they're not worth it. And I'm not against all testing, far from it. What, what I am against is tests that are, are useless to us, that, again, take an enormous amount of time, uh, away from instructional time for our teachers interacting with our children, that penalize and punish our teachers, our principals, and our school districts for just, for, for, just for, for one test that's given on one, you know, a couple of days. Uh, and that, that, again, a judgment call is, continues to be made on, 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 on our schools. Uh, and then again, it, it started off, you know, the IAR and standardized tests have started off with, with a good intention, uh, but they've been reduced to these, um, again, inaccurate measures of, uh, and, and very limited measures of what our children know, and what our families bring, and the knowledge that they bring into our, to our schools and, uh, and classrooms. Uh, and I'm for expanding the way we, uh, define success. And for me, you know, it's some of the work that we've done in regards to detracking algebra and, uh, you know, and, and maybe get, get, giving kids supports, now that we have the data that we know that there's these gaps. Then, okay, then creating these strategies to work with kids through our school climate, school climate plans, uh, through professional development, through culturally responsive pedagogy, that is what needs to happen. And, and we're doing it. Doing it slowly, but we're getting there. But, again, this year, I refuse this test again, and, you know, next year, they're supposed to give the test again, and it's supposed to be shorter, and it's supposed, you're supposed to get more, um, uh, actionable data at a quicker time. But I'll, I will continue refusing until I see that. So, that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. With that, we will move on to our high-five recognition.
I'm happy to do this as well. Um, uh, we do want to know whether or not anybody needs Spanish translation. And Manuel, if you can do that in Spanish, can you ask if anybody needs it? Thank you, muchas gracias. So tonight, we have the honor of recognizing several of our outstanding colleagues as recipients of the High Five Celebrating Excellence in District 65 Recognition Program. Last school year, we launched High Five program with the goal of publicly acknowledging the incredibly dedicated members of our team, and to engage our community in the important work happening throughout our school district every day. We are grateful to First Bank and Trust, which is now Byline Bank, for their continued support of the High Five program. Through their sponsorship, each of our recipients will receive a $75 gift card, a frame recognition certificate, and an invite to a celebratory luncheon for all of the year's recipients in May. So, without further ado, let's get started. I'm going to invite our recipients, um, and those who nominate them by school, to come to the podium for a remark, and we'll wait and do a group picture with everybody afterwards. So once you come up by school, we would, we'll love to hear what you're saying, and then we'll ask you to take your seat so the next school can come up. So first, I'd like to invite Ms. Sherrell Anderson, kindergarten teacher at Oakton, to the podium, along with two of our Oakton family members who submitted nominations on Ms. Anderson's half, Maggie Quinn and Elizabeth Pauley.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Pauley.
And I'm Maggie Quinn.
We want to, whoops. Sorry. We want to thank the district, Dr. Goran, your colleagues, and we want to thank the board for this chance to celebrate excellence. Um, we, we love Oakton. I saw Dr. Allen come in, our principal. We love Oakton, and we love Mrs. Anderson. Our now first graders are sitting in the front row. My son Lloyd and Maggie's daughter Harper had Mrs. Anderson last year. Maggie asked me to speak because she thought she would cry, and now I think I'm going to. Kindergarten is such an important year. Uh, we wanted our kids to learn. We wanted them to learn to read. We wanted them to learn to love numbers. We wanted them to grow in confidence. But most of all, we wanted them to have, um, the feeling that school was theirs, that they could succeed, that they could begin a lifetime of learning. And in order to get that, they had to feel safe. And they felt safe from day one with Mrs. Anderson. When Maggie and I were reflecting on the things we wanted to say, we, um, kept coming back to the way that she saw each child as a unique individual, saw their strengths and saw their needs. I asked Lloyd if I could tell this, this story. Um, before we went to kindergarten, we came in to meet Mrs. Anderson, and I shared with her that some kids, like Lloyd, or Lloyd in particular, need to understand why they're there, that they might be nervous if they don't have a role. And I wasn't sure if she heard me. I was, I'm a first, first-time mom of a kindergartner. And I went away. Uh, we came back the first day of school, and Mrs. Anderson walked right up to Lloyd, and she said, "I need you to hold the door open and hold these keys." And she gave him a job. And from that day on, he knew he had a place in kindergarten. Um, and that's the kind of teacher she was for both of our kids. So, um, thanks for honoring excellence. And Mrs. Anderson, thanks for loving our babies.
No problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pauley, and Ms. Quinn, and especially to Ms. Anderson. Thank you so much. And don't leave, because when we're done, we're going to do certificates and little gifts and pictures. So now I'd like to invite up Deborah Coleman, who's a paraprofessional at the JHR, the Childhood Centre here. Ms. Coleman was nominated by one of her colleagues, Jennifer Heckathor, who will join her at the podium to share a few remarks.
Good evening. I want to thank the board and everybody for this wonderful program that allows us to recognize some of the people that are really, really excellent above and beyond. Um, I'm Jenny Heckathor. I'm a special ed teacher. Been in the district for over 30 years, so I've worked with many parapros, um, some really excellent ones. And I have to say that these past 15 years, I've had the amazing honor of working with Deborah. I first met Deborah when she brought her own child in, um, to my classroom as a three-year-old, and, um, was one of the most dedicated and devoted parents that I had met. She was 100% into the program, trusted me after a moment or two, um, and I could tell that she was really, really an advocate for her own child. Several years after he left our program, I was lucky enough to have her come in, um, as a paraprofessional to work with me. Prior to that, she had worked at Nichols School and worked over at Rice School, um, and finally ended up in Early Childhood and Special Ed. Deborah is so dedicated. Uh, one of the things that makes her so special is that she goes way beyond our classroom of children and really recognizes the needs of all the kids in our school. So we have the super babies. We've got the three, four, and five-year-olds, so they're really, really just starting school. Lots of needs, lots of, um, you know, concerns about whether they're safe and why they're not home with their families, and so, a lot of things that we're really working on. More and more, we're getting more children who come from difficult homes, that have already had trauma in their lives. And Deborah really goes beyond, like I said, beyond our classroom. She's willing to make every single one of those children in our building her own. She's a great observer of child behavior and child needs. She takes on any child that needs her and has this great combination of hugs and, "Okay, now you're going to listen and you're going to do it because I said so." She's an advocate for every child in the, in that building, um, tirelessly with tons of love, and, um, I just couldn't be luckier working with her. So, I'm so happy that I have this opportunity to recognize her.
Thank, thank you so very much, and congratulations, Ms. Coleman. I'd now like to invite Elizabeth Han, the social worker at Lincolnwood Elementary, and Jennifer Keating, the Lincolnwood Health Clerk, up to the podium. Ms. Han works closely with Ms. Keating, who nominated her for the high-five. Ms. Keating has prepared a few remarks for us.
A very few. Public speaking is not my strong suit. Um, thank you, board, for this opportunity to pay some thank yous and some attention to Ms. Han. Liz Han just started this year as our social worker at Lincolnwood, and I think I can speak for most of Lincolnwood when I say she is the best of the best. We have, uh, we do work very closely together with the kids. Um, I have actually been able this year to bring to her attention when we have some children that have some special needs, some extra, um, needs that Ms. Han can provide. She's fantastic. She is warm and fuzzy and funny when she needs to be, and stern when she needs to be. The biggest thing that had me give her this nomination was the turnaround for some of our younger, um, school refusals that we've had. And we've had a lot of kids, like the beginning of this year, we had a lot of young ones that just were really hesitant, would come in and come to my office and cry and demand to go home with mom, or dad, or both. And Ms. Han took one of the most needy, um, that we had, that I've been dealing with over the last couple of years at Lincolnwood, and turned him into a love, a school-loving child that doesn't even take the time in the morning to say hello to anybody because he has to get right to class and can't wait to be there and doesn't want to be sick, doesn't want to miss a day. So Ms. Han was fantastic, and everything that she has done this year has been great, and she is wonderful to work with.
Thank you so very much, and congratulations, Ms. Han. And, uh, last but certainly not least, I'd like to invite Jennifer Rollin to the head secretary Nichols Middle School up to the podium. Miss, woo! Ms. Rollin was nominated by one of her colleagues, Beatriz Cabrera, who's unable to join us this evening, so Mr. Adrian Harry, the Nichols principal, has graciously offered to step up to the podium to offer some remarks.
Good evening. I'd like to, to obviously thank our board, our wonderful superintendent. I've had the privilege of working with Mrs. Rollin for the last four years, and the fact that she hasn't left me means that she needs to get an award just for that. But seriously, um, while I've only had the, the privilege of working with her for four, she's been in the district for 17. Uh, there's not a single hat in our building that she does not wear. Uh, today, actually, a perfect example. Unfortunately, I had to go with one of our students to the hospital. Uh, I mean, Ms. Rollin just jumped right in to cover our lunch, and, and those are the kind of things that she does every day. That's not within her job, but there's no job within our building that's, uh, too big or too small, uh, for her to handle. If we had our Nichols staff here, that they, they would all tell you that she is, uh, the backbone of our institution, um, and wherever I am, I need her. She's my right hand. That's all I have to say. Thank you. We love you, and congratulations. Thank you.
I can now ask for all the recipients to come and join Ms. Cartha and me as we give you your prize possessions.
Thank you all to our wonderful staff. We are so lucky in our district to have such dedicated educators and staff to work with our children. With that, we will move on to, okay, we will move on to public comment. Members of the public are welcome and invited to address the Board of Education during open public meetings. Speakers are discouraged from using the public comment period to air concerns about or voice personal attacks against specific district employees, being mindful that the public comment period is not a suitable forum for fact-finding or resolution of disputes. Rather, we strongly encourage members of the public who have concerns about specific district employees to communicate with us following District Communication Guidelines available in our student handbook. Please remember to state your name and that you have three minutes to address the board. Our first speaker is Megan Lynch.
All those are hard X to follow. Um, so my name is Megan Lynch, and I have a fourth grader and a second grader at Lincolnwood. And I'm here on behalf of the Lincolnwood parent community to show our support for building safe entrances at the, all the remaining District 65 schools this summer. A letter signed by 200 Lincolnwood parents was sent to the board last week, which detailed our support. The letter was signed by parents from every neighborhood in our school community. We believe this work is critical to, to provide another measure of safety for students, teachers, and staff, not just at Lincolnwood, but at Bessie Rhodes and Orington as well. We encourage the school board and the district administration to make it your top priority to ensure all schools receive the necessary resources for the safety and security required. I'd like to read part of the letter that was sent to the board that focuses on some suggestions. Given the potential for enormous harm associated with even one dangerous security breach at any of our schools, we would like to understand if the board's deliberations have included discussions of completing all three secure entry projects this summer. Specifically, has the board considered temporarily taking over what's needed from reserves and replenishing those funds out of the 2019, 2020 outlay funds? This would enable the board to get economies of scale from all three projects at this year's rates, thereby avoiding potential additional cost increases associated... Has the board considered a bond issuance to raise the necessary capital to complete these projects in 2019? Again, if all schools cannot be completed this summer, what commitments can be made to the remaining properties to provide additional safety and access supports, including the potential for additional staffing or working with volunteer organizations and consultations with the school? Lastly, what assurances can the district provide to guarantee any work planned for 2020 is not further delayed? Thank you for listening.
My name is Ike Dixon, and I have a third grader at Lincolnwood, as well as two other children in District 65. I'm here, along with Megan Lynch, to remind the district and to remind the board and the superintendent of the value of life, just like we protect our homes and our automobiles with alarms. Not because we believe those alarms will prevent anyone that really wants to steal our stuff from stealing our stuff, but it's a measure of deterrent. It's a measure of, to send a measure that you, to send a message that you're not a soft target. And that's what a safe, secure entrance does for our children and our schools. It sends a message that we are not a soft target. How much more should we provide protection for our vulnerable stakeholders, which are our children? And I would prefer, as well as all the parents that voted for the referendum, which we had in mind, that all our schools would receive a safe, secure entrance when we help pass the referendum, that this district would go down in history and be known for their preventive measures, and not as the district that should've, could've, and would've protected their children. Thank you.
Candace, Candace Shaker. Is Candace here?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
My name is Candace Shakur. I'm a parent of a second grader at King Arts and two other little ones. I'm a member of Black Parents of King Arts, which is a group we started at the school to bring together Black parents and families. We've been partnering with the PTA and One King Arts to host an event tomorrow to discuss our most recent MAP scores and plans for moving forward from there. I want to share some of the letter with you all that we sent to Dr. Goran, members of the board, and other school leaders. The current MAP scores at King Arts indicate that, in a particular grade in our school, 0% of Black students are meeting the college readiness benchmark in reading, while 89% of white students are meeting it. In a separate grade, 0% of Black students are meeting the college readiness benchmarks in math, while 75% of white students are meeting it. In another separate grade, 0% of Black students are meeting the college readiness benchmark in math, while 46% of white students are meeting it. In a totally separate grade, 0% of Black students are meeting the college readiness benchmark in math, while 50% of white students are meeting it. In six out of nine grades at King Arts, Black students score 61% below white students in reading. In six out of nine grades at King Arts, Black students score 51% below white students in math. As parents, we believe that these numbers not only represent a systematic neglect of Black children, but tangible evidence of a school-to-prison pipeline at our school. The disparity in scores is inconceivable, intolerable, and utterly unacceptable. Our school is in a state of emergency requiring immediate, urgent response. As our district leaders, what do you think when you see those numbers? And more importantly, what do you plan to do? On Tuesday, March 19th, which is tomorrow, we're hosting a town hall event, and we invite everyone to join our conversation. We, as parents, were profoundly disappointed when we learned of these MAP scores, and our hope is that this town hall can provide parents and caregivers with the information needed to move forward in confidence with the district. I hadn't anticipated that there would be so many other parents here today, and if I can just quickly address all the other parents, I encourage you to find out that data for your school, and if this is more than just our school, which I think it is, then this is a conversation we should all be having. Thanks.
I'm Abdel Shakur. That was my wife, my wonderful, beautiful wife, that just spoke with Sunny. And we have a daughter Lucy, who is a second grader at King Arts, and my son is, the plan is for him to go to King Arts as well. We saw that data at a PTA meeting. The principal shared that data with us. My understanding is that it's not often that people are able to see the data presented in that way. And honestly, I was, I really kind of had two emotions. The first one was fear, and I still have a sense of fear about that data, because I'm not necessarily a test person, but I know that a test, it reflects a certain reality in an environment, and the reality that I see there is frightening, because I see the results of it every day on the news. I see it in my classroom. I'm a high school teacher as well, and I know that if students are not prepared, or do not feel they're a part of this school, or are not getting what they need, then there's real-life consequences. The second emotion that I had was rage, honestly, and anger about an environment where this has been allowed to happen, or this is, this is happening for, my understanding is, this is kind of historical. It's not some new blip on the radar screen. It's been very encouraging since we've written that letter, that the district has been responsive, and that we are gonna, I'm hoping that we can work together as partners on this, because I don't really know what the alternative is at this point, because what's happening right now is unacceptable. So, we're really looking forward to having the district there and having a conversation that really kind of includes the voices of parents, the voices of teachers, the voices of the administration, and the voices of the district, to really kind of listen to each other and find out what exactly is going on in our school and how we can go forward. So, that's it.
Hello. I'm Jamie Wallace. I'm also a parent at King Arts. I have a first grader, and I'm a member of the PTA. I have, I'm the co-chair of the grocery program, where we deliver groceries to families that are identified needing the additional support. I also am a member, a lead of the capital planning committee, and we fought for our Safeway entry, and I thank the district for coming through with that. And I also am a member of the Black Parents of King Arts. But my history with King Arts goes actually farther back than that, about 20 years. I worked in the research, planning, and development group with Judy Levison, was my boss. Marsha Dwyer was our admin, and we were a three-person team that was really dedicated to looking at the scores, comparing the scores, and going into the schools and actually helping and supporting where that was needed. And I will tell you, both of them had children at King Arts and spoke so highly of it. I'd been in the school, and I thought to myself, one day, I'm going to be, if I'm still in Evanston, I'm going to opt-in in the lottery, and hopefully, my children will go to King Arts. Since that's happened, and since I've been in the school and these volunteer roles, I've actually seen a lot, just from an outsider-in perspective, but also working with teachers, talking to teachers, talking to students, talking to our principals. And so, when I saw the MAP scores, you know, they are data, and that's what I do for a living. I look at data, but I always ask why, and I try to look deeper to understand what's driving those changes, what's driving those concerns. And there's a lot there. And we shared those concerns with Dr. Goran, with his leadership team, and we're gonna have that courageous conversation tomorrow, so I thank you for that. But I will tell you, our school is stressed. You know, our teachers, where there used to be laughter and talking and teaming and collaboration, there's division, there's divide, there's, there's trauma that they're dealing with, with our students. With the grocery program, I've seen an influx, month over month, year over year, of more families in need, which is showing to the stresses of that. And I just asked that, you know, beyond the data, let's look at what are some of those systemic things that are happening, because if you're a teacher and you're stressed, and your resources are taken away from reading and math, and your population is changing, where they're dealing with trauma and things that you're not equipped to deal with, it's going to trickle down to those students, it's going to trickle down to the gen-ed population. And we're going to continue to see these scores like this, and we're going to continue to see families leave, and we're going to continue to see parents like this coming and sharing concerns. So, looking forward to the conversation. I thank you for the time, and that's it.
We're just gonna do it together. Good evening. My name is Shannon Lang, and I am the proud parent of Francesca, third grader at Dawes, and Marlo, seventh grader at Schute, and I'm one of the PTA co-presidents.
Hello. I'm Lori Havercamp. I'm another one of the Dawes PTA co-presidents, and I'm a proud parent of Harry, who's in second grade, and Gigi, who's in kindergarten. We stand before you today because we are advocating for much-needed resources for Dawes. Our statement is based on concerns that have been shared with us during conversations with teachers and parents. The lack of consistent leadership at Dawes has taken its toll on our beloved community, our teachers, our families, and our students. We will be on our fifth principal in five years. We have a principal forum on Wednesday, and I'll say that again. It is our fifth principal in five years that we have a forum on Wednesday. We are grateful for Ms. Parison, who is our interim principal. Her kindness, her wisdom, and the love she has for our students this year has been greatly appreciated. We value that she has been doing all she can to advocate on behalf of both students and teachers. We also believe wholeheartedly that Dawes teachers are the best in the district. I don't know how they've navigated through this many styles of leadership in the past four years, but they are doing an amazing job. Their dedication to our children goes unprecedented and unsurpassed. This year, Dawes has seen an increase of students with intense behavioral challenges that require additional strategies and supports to meet their needs and maintain safety for all students and staff. Teachers have shared with us their concerns they're facing on a daily basis. Loss of instruction time in class, specials, PE, et cetera. Safety in the hallways during transitions in the gym on the bus. Loss of prep time because teachers are monitoring students that may pose a danger to themselves and others. Constant distraction that creates a challenging teaching and learning environment. There's a shortage of staff that is CPI-trained in de-escalation techniques to safely contain and support students. One of our Dawes teachers assistants has already been injured this year.
In the same respect, students have gotten injured as a consequence of thrown objects or just being in close proximity of a student who is struggling and becomes unable to control their actions. Students are having to evacuate classrooms because of impending student danger and witnessing students that are yelling and screaming or being physically aggressive. The overarching theme is that Dawes keeps receiving more and more students with extreme social and emotional trauma, but without the supports in place to take care of such students. For all Dawes students to continue to thrive, and our teachers and our community to feel supported, the Dawes PTA is asking for the following four things. One, an assistant principal. Two, more teachers' assistants. Three, more personnel that are CPA-trained specifically in de-escalation techniques. And four, an additional social worker. We are also asking that District 65 leadership be more transparent and more communicative to the pressing needs at Dawes. I, myself, had had emails and phone calls go completely unanswered and ignored by leadership, and I am not the only one in our school, and this is unacceptable. The challenges we face are happening now. They cannot wait, and we will not wait until we have a new principal in place. Dawes is a welcoming community. Our parents and caregivers, as well as our teachers and staff, look forward to working with you and implementing a plan that will address all of these issues and provide an equitable teaching and learning environment for all at Dawes. We would also like to ensure that leadership is fully aware of what Dawes teachers themselves would like to see in our permanent principal. They would like to see, ideally, someone who is bilingual in English and Spanish, one who has a strong sense of community, one who is familiar with a variety of cultures, as Sergio spoke earlier, of all the different cultures that we have in our population, one who has a strong sense of discipline, one who is good at family communication, and one who is familiar with self-contained ELL and TWE programs, and ideally, someone who has a primary school background. We thank you for your time, consideration, and, most importantly, for your future action. Thank you.
My name is Elaine Burns, and I'd like to use my time to talk about secure entrances, since tonight the board will be voting again on a proposal to fund building secure entrances. I have three kids. One of them is in District 65 at Dr. Bessie Rhodes School of Global Studies, and since my daughter's at Bessie Rhodes, I want to mention why a secure entrance at Bessie Rhodes is important. But I would like to add that secure entrances at all three District 65 schools without them should be prioritized. Sadly and disturbingly, we live in a day and age when school security doesn't just mean protecting your kid from the playground bully or a fall off the jungle gym. I imagine that many of you have actually been inside of Bessie Rhodes already, and you know that the main entrance is a long row of three double doors. You walk in through any of those double doors and you, excuse me, you immediately have access to the library, the K-through-five wing, the stairs that go upstairs to the middle school, and the auditorium, all without having to go past the school office. Creating a secure entrance at Bessie Rhodes will make the students and staff there more safe. I know that everybody in this room wants that, and I'd just like to thank you for making secure entrances a priority.
My name is Janine Brownell, and I've been a parent at Dawes for 10 years. My oldest has now moved on to the high school, and I want to say ditto to everything our PTA presidents said. So, what I can add is maybe an image that will stick with you and a specific story to just make the challenges at Dawes real for you. The image is something that's stuck in my mind ever since I heard it first from Dr. Latarcha Green. A PTA meeting early in her time as principal, she used the image of Keystone Cops as an analogy of how it felt to her at the time, of how things got done at Dawes School. Now, she didn't mean this to be critical of the teachers or staff at Dawes, but she recognized then that the lack of support systems and structures put the staff in a state of being reactive to crisis after crisis. Does everyone know Keystone Cops? It's that idea that we're all rushing in and kind of tripping over one another, making mistakes, being inefficient, and probably ineffective. So, when I heard this image, it really has stuck with me. I appreciated her honesty, and I felt she made a real spot-on diagnosis of the lack of articulation, coordination, and communication around the systems of of articulation, coordination, and communication around the systems of support at Dawes. Of course, when she left, things have only gotten worse. We have the most hard-working, well-intentioned staff that frankly goes above and beyond day after day, but they simply don't have the staffing resources or leadership to be effective. It's not fair to the students or the staff. So here's one particular example that's personal to me because it's about my son. My son has some impulsive behaviors that can be very distracting in the classroom. He is fairly frequently sent to the principal's office, which takes a lot of her time. He does not have an IEP, so he does not see any social worker. He just talks a lot in class and gets sent down to the office. So last week, I got a phone call around 2:00 from the school nurse. Mrs. Parisen was out of the building. It was, she was probably here, at a district meeting, and so he was sitting with the nurse at 2:00. I said, "Okay, well, so what's the plan? Are we going to have some problem solving? Someone going to meet with him? How is he going to repair the disruption and damage he's caused in the classroom?" No plan. Principal's out of the building. He'll sit in the nursing station the next 90 minutes. That's Keystone Cops, right? Nobody is there when the principal's out of the building. So as we engage in the principal hiring process once again, I ask you to think holistically about the needs of Dawes. To attract strong candidates and retain them, we need to give them the support that they need to be successful. And even if we can find the perfect candidate, a strong principal can't do it alone. Dawes needs an assistant principal, an additional social worker, or the new person will be spending time with my son on a frequent basis. I take you at your word that you're committed to equity in this district. So I ask that you look at the need and not just the numbers. Dawes is a smaller school, but the needs are not small. Dawes has a TWE program, three self-contained special ed classrooms, 30% of the population does not speak English proficiently, a majority of families qualify for free and reduced lunches. So we need to look at the need and not just the numbers, and give Dawes the leaders and the staffing it needs and deserves. Thank you.
I'm Megan Shay. I am a straight, married, white, cisgendered female mother of two white children in Evanston. My son is in 2nd grade at King Arts, and my daughter is currently in preschool, eagerly ready to join her brother at King Arts in the fall of 2020. I have been engaged with the equity programming in this district for the last several years. I've been grateful for the challenges and education I've gathered from seed, beyond diversity, and many incredible programming opportunities around white privilege and anti-racism from the engaged parents of this community. I want to make sure that we are reminded again tonight that there is direct tremendous harm being done to our children of color in this school district, from continued racial slurs and bullying, along with the underbelly of implicit bias that is displayed through the enormous discrepancies in the testing and disciplinary data. Harm is being done daily. I hear about it every day from parents in this district. It comes in many forms, but one repeated theme I have been hearing is from parents of color with children of color who feel ignored, erased, and exhausted. As a white parent, I have lost faith in our current system that is still perpetuating white dominance. That is doing harm to all children, particularly my white children as well. I would like eradicating these discrepancies in the testing and disciplinary data to be our number-one priority today and every day in District 65. We need action. We don't want to wait any longer. We need to dismantle this archaic system of racism and not stand for the normalization of harm that is continuing in this district. And we need you all in order to do that. We need continuous communication. Continuous communication builds trust, which we need as a community in order to heal. I understand that dismantling this system is hard, and there isn't an easy answer, but in order to build trust with the parents in this community, we need to hear from you, even when you don't have much to report. We need to know that you have a short-term and a long-term plan of addressing this harm and that you are executing to that plan. I urge you all to keep this harm top of mind each and every day that you are here, and I ask you to remember these brilliant, amazing, beautiful rays of hope that we have, the greatest opportunity to walk with, to mentor, and to witness their evolution. Please, hold their hearts and minds carefully in your hands and understand that anytime you or I decide to let it go, that it is too hard a problem to solve. That choice is doing harm and continuing the cycle of internalized dominance and internalized oppression in Evanston. Let's be the example of a district who puts the children of color first, who treats all of our beloved community with value, who through clear communication builds trust, begins healing, and moves forward.
Our final speaker will be Heather Sweeney.
I have a child at Nichols, but I want to speak tonight about the King Arts data. Standing with the parents who have spoken, and partially because of what Candace said, I imagine this data is similar across all of our schools. So like everyone, I worried when I saw these figures. I worried what it's going to take to see change. And I worried that when we see these figures, some of us aren't surprised. And this lack of surprise could reflect that the fact that our country's institutions have been built on inequitable and racist policies, and so our schools produce these kinds of racial disparities. But that lack of surprise can also reflect a complacency with these racial disparities. And I wonder what could happen if we treated these numbers like this is the first time we've seen anything like them, that we're the only district to produce this kind of data. What would we think then? What would we feel if we had never seen these kinds of numbers in our district before? What would we do if we were the only district in Illinois with these numbers? I'm guessing we'd gather a lot of data and draw on all the expertise that we have internally. And if we weren't satisfied, we'd bring in outside experts. And we wouldn't be satisfied until we saw a change in these numbers. So I ask us to be deeply surprised by this data and to chart a course as if we're in crisis, because we are in a crisis.
Thank you very much to all of our parents and community members who spoke. We will move on to our next item on the agenda. Sergio, you've got the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation outlining the attached group motion to improve the personnel appointments, leaves, and separations. February 2019 Board and Finance Committee meeting minutes. Destruction of February 2017 closed session audio recordings. January 2019 budget amendments, list of bills and treasuries report. FY '20 building use fees. Summer 2019 building use agreement, and the gift approval for Bessie Rhodes.
Do you have a second?
Second. Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Halepern?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
Our next item is the approval of the 2019-2020 school calendar. Anya, do you want to give the motion, and then we can discuss?
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 school calendar as presented.
Second.
Do we have any presentation, any? Beatrice, did you want to say?
Not for the 1920 school calendar. The only thing we had accidentally left off, Veterans Day, we included that. I think the discussion would come on the 2020-2021 calendar, if that's further down. I don't know if we can jump to it now.
Yeah, we'll go through the other approval items. Does anybody have any questions? So can we go through and do the little call?
Sure. Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Halepern?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Tanya Vudi?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
Our next item is the approval of the ESSA school work plan. Lindsay?
I move that the Board of Education approve the ESSA school work plan to be submitted to the Illinois School Board of Education.
Second.
So these are particular work plans that are as a result of our results on the park exam, or now the IAR exam. And what the new state accountability system does is requires schools that are in need of improvement in particular areas to actually focus. So the plans, as we have them here, are addressing the specific needs at several of our schools, and I'm going to turn it over now to Leep for a few more details.
Good evening. So the three schools are Schut, Haven, and Oakton. And the plan essentially, the ESSA required that our schools go through a needs analysis process, building on the school work plan that they'd already developed. So it's a deeper, further analysis across a variety of indicators, both governance, looking at school organizational questions, and then instructional questions. And so all of our schools have identified learning partners to support them also in this work. So that's contracts for Oakton that is part of our planning process. AUSL will be a partner for Schut and for Oakton, and then CEC would be a learning partner to Haven. And the needs, the part of the process to begin to access these funds, which will stop August 1st, I think it is, that this, the grant would essentially be, we have to be done with this process this period, requires board approval to continue the work. So the approval tonight, actually, is not final, but more rather, okay, we approve and you can continue, but there's always time, space within that for revision.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Couple of questions. Thank you. My first question is more for definitions and for us, as well as those who are watching. In terms of the designation of an underperforming school and what constitutes that, and these three specific schools, it's in certain categories, what does that mean in terms of how they got the designation?
So the designation is based on the performance on the actual park test. And so for those subgroups, how those particular subgroups, they calculated essentially a variety of things like ELA proficiency, math. So park and other indicators were used to come to this designation. For example, this would be, they look at 50% growth on the park. They also include chronic absenteeism for that subgroup. They also look at a climate survey, and as well, math proficiency and ELA proficiency and EL progress towards proficiency. So those combine into what essentially they're saying, that for that particular subgroup, it falls under a designation of underperforming.
And then, underperforming, just correct me if I'm wrong, when I read it, it said underperforming means that that group performed relative to, worse than the average of the lowest, than all student groups. So in case, and most, all these had IEPs, so was one category. So IEPs, students with IEPs, were designated to have performed lower than all student categories at the lowest 5% of performing of schools across the state. Is that correct?
Yeah. So they first do the overall average, and then they do each individual group, and then they rank order, they create this index score that Dr. Kogadi was talking about, they create the index score, and then they rank order all the schools in this state. And they take the bottom 5% are deemed the underperforming. The lowest performing category, of which we have no schools, would be if a school was also over, like, in overall, underperforming for all kids, right? And so this is kind of not the lowest rating, but the one above that, which is really bottom 5% for these subgroups.
For these subgroups, but not for these subgroups compared to all students? Because the way it reads is this subgroup compared to all students for the bottom 5%. That's the way that's written on the...
No, it's an apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay. So you're comparing the performance of students with IEPs or ELL students in our school relative to the bottom 5% of schools? The IEP students in the...
Across all the population, across all of the state, and then we're in the bottom 5% for that group. So it's all of kind of the, they do the overall calculation, and they rank order, and they take the bottom 5%. And then they do subgroup calculations, they rank order, and they take the bottom 5%. So within that band, the subgroup population, let's say students with disabilities, students who have IEPs, out of all of the schools in the state, they rank order them, and we were in the bottom 5%.
Okay.
And in this case, as Kylie says, the schools are not in the bottom 5% of all schools in the state. It's the strand of students as identified by the indicator that is in the bottom 5%.
But as compared to other, that same strand in the rest of the schools?
Across the state.
It's misleading the way it's written in the Illinois school report. Just for those who go to the website, it doesn't read that way.
And it's a new thing that they're doing. It's very complicated.
Yeah.
The formulas are really difficult to interpret, so I really appreciate that. It's hard to follow.
So that said, I guess my comment is, you know, it's obviously important that we are doing these plans. Because the thread, and I'll just use the students with IEPs as the example, because that strand of, that segment of students was present in all three of the schools, there, I did not see anything specific in the plans talking about how we're going to be working with students with special needs and improve their performance. I mean, I saw MTSS referred to, but it seems like the plans are, in fact, school-level work plans, which are important, but they aren't, I didn't see a correlation, a direct correlate connection between what this underperforming categorization, how we've gotten it, and then the work plans. And so I just wanted to bring that up as an outsider reading it and saying, okay, if I wouldn't, I would have expected to see more data relative to those subgroups and more strategies and interventions relative to those subgroups specifically, or somehow articulated in the plan.
Well, I would say that we're still in the needs analysis phase, and so the plans, actually, they're still digging into understanding what is at the core of what's happening. Also, Joyce has been, this will be complimentary to the work that she's doing, is she's developing an audit, they're visiting a review, they're visiting every school, and they're working with those schools as part of that. So the part of the work with the learning partners is to go actually deeper, to be able to get very, very specific. So it's not, what you're seeing here are more just baseline. The state's turnaround in these plans was very fast, so to actually come up with a robust and very, like, specific answer to why this is emerging this way is, was too quick, to be honest with you. They really needed more time. And so this is just more laying the ground, foundation of like, okay, let's get some of the basics of like, the framework of what a plan would look like, the planning process would look like, and then now, we're going to go in deeper. And so I know that a couple of schools, Schut and Oakton, already have site visits within the next two weeks with an AUSL partner, and then I know CEC, they're approaching, because there are three subgroups at Haven, they're approaching it from a more comprehensive approach. So it's not just, it's how do you build the systems? You have to review the systems and the structure that are supporting this. So they're partnering with teachers, they're working with the union to look at this in a more comprehensive way.
And yet, the state is providing us resources, and we can use those resources with the learning partners to focus on the particular strands. And so that's part of what we can design as we move forward.
Yeah. I just, I think it's important to challenge us to look at those, what are the systemic, perhaps, challenges? I know these schools got the designation. I would, I think we can probably extrapolate, because we've talked about students with special needs in general, and, you know, kind of where we are, that that's an area that, obviously, in these schools, but that, you know, at large, there's concern. So really honing in on that.
I'll be carrying this feedback. Stacy unfortunately couldn't be here, but I'll be carrying this feedback to her.
The other thing to recognize is that 12 of our schools, six of our schools received the highest rating, and another six the next rating as well. And so, and that still doesn't say that we don't need room, there's not room for improvement in those schools as well, but 12 of our 15 schools received the top levels of the state designation.
To piggyback on Candace's... To piggyback on Candace's comments, similar to some of the other data that's been shared in other places, or the school work plans, it's a motif that we've had around the groups, the subgroups that are perpetually struggling to show academic gains. And that's, if we do what we've done, we're going to get what we've got. So, at some point, these plans have to reflect action steps that are intentionally trying to change behavior, and change things in the schools, and we're still looking at plans that are high level, right? So, at some point, there should be plans that say, at this school with this subgroup of students, here's what we used to do, and here's what we're doing differently that we hope is going to spur a different outcome for these students. And if it stays at a high level, I realize the board looks at it at a high level, we're just going to sit here and look at another work plan. At some point, it'd be nice to look at a work plan with data that trends upward, even if we don't like the data.
I like data, but I don't like inaccurate data, or data that's useless. And again, but again, I think this here approach, you're right, so I work at it, it'd complicate things. I mean, and part of it is the way SS is set up, right, and how we have to report on, we have to be accountable. You know, my, my hope is that, again, you know, and piggybacking off of Joy and of Candace, that, that again, that we really do dig into these specific strategies, as we heard from a lot of the parents who are complaining here, is that, again, that their, their parents are hungry for transparency, they're hungry for information, and they're hungry for specific actions that are going to actually change the, the outcomes for our kids. So, whatever we can do to communicate that as transparently, and as often as possible by any means, we would, it would, it would benefit everybody here involved, and then everybody who was in this room. So, you know, that's our, my challenge to all of us is that we continue to try to do this equity work, but do, try to do it as transparent and informative as possible to parents, so that they know what's actually happening at, at the ground level. Because again, we, again, we have these high-level conversations, but parents are hungry, because what are you specifically going to do to show me that, that you really believe in equity? Are you going to, are you going to hire an AP for my school? Are you going to hire more social workers to deal with, you know, some of our kids with, you know, who are dealing, families that are dealing with trauma? Are you going to, you know, so there is these specific things that are coming out. So, so, again, I've heard some, some solutions from parents that I think we need to think about as we look, move forward with these types of work plans, as well as any other type of the work that we're doing as it unfolds, and, and, and building the capacity of all the adults in, in our community.
Those, I appreciate what you just said, and those are important parts of the prioritization that we're doing as a team that will present in our budget going forward. Just to be clear, and this is not countering at all what you're saying, the money in here is for plans, and for doing, so the state resources aren't to go hire staff or to, to create new positions, it's to actually address these issues through the planning process and through the sort of data-driven process.
Right. So, we partner with CEC, and they're presumably going to come in and do some training, and guide the team in looking at things differently. That should result in a school team wanting to do things differently-
Correct.
-that they would then be able to communicate with their community.
That's right.
Right. As clearly as we would say, yes, let's build security vestibules, and then you see a new security vestibule, right? What does that look like when we're talking about academic change?
But the state, yes.
I get, I get the state-
And the state resources, I can't buy a social worker on a, on the state resource.
So, yeah, I think, I think we're clear on that now. I agree, one of the concerns that I have is the lack of specificity, and it definitely reads like there was a tool available to use, and the tool was used in order to populate some categories. But given that the data aligns in some way with data that we have, I would hope to see work plans that were more specific to how we are urgently responding to this data. What tools and expertise do we, as a district, have at our disposal that's going to be deployed in order to respond to the needs that this data is indicating we have, and that we've had data for years that is glaringly telling us that there is an issue in how we have engaged in instructional practices in the past? So, I was eager to see some specifics pop up, and disappointed not to.
So, as I stated, I, this process, we really didn't even get full confirmation of what the process looked like till really December, and in January, it was just really gathering what's, helping the principals understand what the next steps look like. And so, it's been a very short process in terms of deepening what's expected, in terms of what the state is expecting. And so, we, we don't really, what we have here is making sure that there's a skeletal frame. We do not believe that this is the plan, this is really the final plan, or by a long shot. Really, to the point about specific goals, metrics, benchmarks, those will be in there for those particular subgroups with a much more robust plan to make those changes. For both those sites, which is why they all three signed up with learning partners, is to also get an outside view into what we may see from within. So, while, because the, we may have our own assumptions, we may want to have our own blind spots, that is why they signed up with learning partners, to be able to address what we may be missing internally, in terms of pushing ourselves to address whether it's an instructional need, is it a, a resource allocation need to the question about resources? Is it a, is the way we're, we're, we're providing the leadership or the professional learning? And so, all three are looking to do a much more comprehensive approach to that. So, I, so absolutely, I, we, we, I would agree completely that these are woefully absent of the specificity that would be really needed for a more profound plan. What this is, is really more laying the groundwork of what, the foundation of what we need to do, and we will be returning to this board with those updates.
And that doesn't prevent us from, in our own plans, being much more specific as we move forward with the principals and the school improvement teams going forward, and taking advantage then of the limited state resources to at least leverage that lens on our, on our practices.
And I also wanted to, we're talking, when we're talking about this data, we're talking about outcomes, but I think we can, I hope we can also agree that these outcomes are reflecting an experience that children and families are having, a disparate experience that children and families are having of being in our school district in comparison to their peers. And I think some of that specificity, I'm thinking of, what are the practices that will be put in place to change that experience, the hostile and neglectful experience that some folks have suggested they're, they're having? So, yeah, I'm curious to see what is, how does that translate into practice?
I have a question, and I think you, you may have touched upon this in your introductory comments, but these designations are based on park scores.
Exclusively park.
Right.
Because I thought you said that it was also-
There's other, it, park is the assessment component, but there's other data also integrated, like absenteeism, things like that.
So, how does that, you know, because obviously, when we, in our achievement and accountability report, when we report out, we're reporting out on MAP data. So, how does, what's that?
We do park as well.
We do park as well.
Right. But, I mean, for the most part, we're, are, we're, yeah, like, all of the, we, well, for what counts, we're using MAP. So, how does this, how does park, you know, in these plans, like, how, how does that relate to MAP? Like, how do we see similar? I, it's because I'm saying, like, you know, when, when, I guess, I'll give the example too, when we're, the school work plans that are created at the beginning of the year are created based on MAP data, correct? Not on park data. So-
We do park things later, so.
So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, teachers are, are making plans, they're looking at data, they're looking at MAP data, and then all of a sudden, we get these designations that are based on park. Is this surprising? Is this basically trending what we would have expected based on the MAP data that we were seeing, or is there a difference?
I would say, I mean, obviously, there are different assessments. I would say that a lot of assessments are really consistent with one another, and if you're working on instructional strategies that will change pedagogical practices in the classroom, if you're focused on increasing rigor, if you're focused on increasing access to standards-based assignment, increasing student-to-student dialogue, those sorts of experiences will show up in lots of different data points. So, you'll see increases in MAP data, you'll see increases in park data, you'll see increases in other assessments, like end-of-unit scores, things of that nature. So, if, if the data is used in an evidence way to help guide and push forward conversations that include not just the data, but also reflections on practice, like, a lot of these planning periods included teacher voice, well, where do you think we could improve? What are your thoughts? You know, it's an inclusive process, the school planning process. And so, it's, it's really synthesizing across a lot of different types of evidence, not just quantitative test score data, but qualitative experiential data, you know, voices from teachers, voices from parents. It should really be an inclusive planning process. And so, it's almost irrespective necessarily of the assessment, that's one piece of evidence that's part of what goes into this work. So, I think that in terms of it being a baseline, it's useful, but all of the other kind of ingredients that go into what is going to transform outcomes for kids, that's kind of where I'd place my money. Does that make sense? Does that help? I mean, we're not running correlations between these assessments. I'm just saying, it's a lot more information than just a specific test. If you're working on access to high-quality instruction, you'll see MAP scores improve, you'll see, you know, park scores improve. If you gave a test that we've never given before in the entire history of the district, you would probably see kids improve on that as well.
And so, I guess, and maybe this isn't really, this discussion, this is a broader discussion to have about our use of assessments and the number of assessments that we give. And if we feel like there's a correla-, there's a strong enough correlation between park and MAP, then, you know, are we giving overlapping assessments that maybe we don't need to give? We know from, we hear from teachers, we hear from parents, that students are feeling over-assessed. And so, I think it's important that we have the broader discussion about-
I think that's a really-
What is, what are the actual assessments that we can give that are going to drive student achievement?
I think that's a really important, I'll pass it to you next. I think that's a really important question to ask. I would say it's about how we use the assessment data, it's not just strictly the number of assessments. So, we need teachers to get data in a timely way, so that they're able to kind of guide and, you know, make changes to their instructional practice. Our state assessment data comes once a year, and it's after those kids have already left those classrooms. It's not really a functional assessment for formative, you know, improvement of your instructional practice with the kids that you're serving in the moment. And so, we need tests that actually provide teachers with valuable information that allows them to change what they're doing in the classroom. Dr. Green?
Yeah. I was just going to add that MAP does provide a report that's a projected proficiency summary, right? And so, that report has some predictive indicators in relation to the correlation from MAP and PARK. But exactly to Kylie's point, the timeliness of the PARK data being received doesn't really allow it to be used as an instructional tool, but we certainly could do assessments or evaluations, so to speak, of curriculum or larger topics in that, in that regard. So, there is a correlation with the Common Core standards, but it's not necessarily as useful down to the classroom level.
And at this point, we have a hard time making a substantive choice, which is implied in your comments, Sunny, because we do offer MAP, and we, we have data over the years. We're required to offer PARK, and PARK is now being used for accountability purposes. And so, until that, the, the challenge of PARK gets worked out, one way or the other, that it becomes the robust, the IAR becomes the robust assessment that was promised originally, we're, we're squeezed into offering both. And we're squeezed, with all respect, Sergio, because I, I hear you, we're squeezed into pushing our, our educators and our families, and encouraging them to take the PARK exam, because it also has ramifications on these accountability ratings, which become public accountability ratings.
And I understand all of that. I would just argue that we also give a number of other assessments, K through eight, and so, it's not just MAP and PARK even that we're talking about, that it's a, it's a comprehensive look at all of the assessments that we're giving. And the necessity of giving those tests, the, the frequency with which we're giving them, and are we giving them in a way that we're, and are we giving our educators time to actually use the data formatively to change instruction, to, to adjust curriculum as necessary? And I, I think there is some question about whether we're, we're building in that time appropriately.
Yeah. I just had a question regarding the revisions. When the, so the revisions will be put together with the learning, their learning partners, and then approximately, like, when, when will that be completed?
So, the funds have to be spent by a certain August 1st. So, the, I mean, really, it's to prepare a plan for the next school year. So, the goal would be, I don't have the exact timeline, but-
But they have to be done before Ag-, before August?
Oh, absolutely. I can imagine that-
So, we won't, we won't see the revisions?
Well, at our first board meeting, you would, we could plan to present revisions.
But I'm assuming by that time, some of the action steps will have already taken place, and, right?
So, I would say by, I mean, I would say by the last board meeting in June, there should be a much more defined plan. I would be, we would hope, shocked or surprised, actually, if there wasn't something more robust by that point, just because the amount of time, and the whole point of this period is to provide the state to say, your first year is to really engage in a planning process. And so, part of that would then include, like, what are we going to do next in terms of the professional learning required for those teams, what are the kinds of things to play? So, I am pretty confident, and I, I'm only saying, I'm being reserved, just because Stacy's here, and she's the overall project manager, but I would say that, and we can come to the next board meeting and just give you an update on those dates, if you would like.
I'm also confident, I haven't met the new state superintendent, Sergio, you know the new state superintendent, you've met her.
I've met her.
But I'm, I'm optimistic. She's a fabulous educator, longtime superintendent, been deeply involved in issues in Illinois, and from everything I've heard and read about her, she's open to this sort of dialogue, and I think that's something that we, as a collective board and administration, can express in a constructive way as the state of Illinois moves forward on these issues, because indeed, the push, we hear the push as it relates to what are our plans, where's our urgency, how do we express this, and what are our next steps on our own planning? This is also commentary about the state of Illinois that we should collectively offer to our friends in Springfield.
I have one other question, and I was just curious if you could tell us a little bit more about the, are you referring to as learning partners for each of the schools? Who the learning partners are and how they were identified?
And when the work with the learning, has it already begun, or is there, what's the timeline for the work to?
So, learning partners did not have to be selected, so it was not, it was an option for schools to engage in, it was not a mandatory part of the process. So, based on some feedback and consulting with Joyce and Stacy, and with the schools, they said, well, let's vet, let's go and reach out to learning partners that we know have had some experience in the field, and let's constantly reach out to them. And so, we had Joyce and I met, I think, with three or four different teams, and really went through a series of identifying, here are questions, so we engaged in a process of, here are the, the needs that we have, here are the kinds of, here's the kind of district that we are, and so, tell us a little bit about your process. Now, for both us and the learning partners, we were all in a learning about the process itself place, because it's brand-new, and so, it was a little bit of, so tell us what you understand about what the state is expecting, and we'll tell you a little bit about what we're understanding, and then we came to some medium. And then, basically, Joyce and I vetted those, and came up, in listening to the conversation and the feedback from the presentations, we essentially made some recommendations. So, in hearing the conversations, we, we, we felt that the AUSL, which has had a long which has had a long school transformative and success rate, there were some nuances in the conversation that we felt really matched with what we heard and we saw from, for those two schools. And then with CEC, which had a much broader, what do you call it? There were three subgroups that were impacted. We, when listening to CEC, which actually Ms. Roberson and the team already had some relationship or interest in working with the TURN network, so the union, the Teachers Union Reform Network. So we felt that in a, in a lot of ways, that that seemed to be a natural match as well. And so those were our two recommendations.
And these partners, correct me if I'm wrong, came from an approved list from the state as well?
I forgot to say, yes. So the first step is the state approved a series of partners. And there was, and so that's why we went there.
The Consortium for Educational Change is CEC, and they are the purveyors of the TURN network that we've been working with directly. And so some of their consultants are people that we've gotten to know. And AUSL is the Academy for Urban School Leadership and has done some, as I believe says, some very successful school turnaround efforts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so can we go ahead and see the roll call on that?
Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillpern?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
Our next item, the approval of the Head Start continuation application for 1920.
I move that the Board of Education approve the FY 1920 Head Start continuation application, including the self-assessment and other attachments.
Second.
Katrina, did you want to come up and, did you, did you have a presentation that you wanted to give or?
All right, Sharon and Katrina are here. If you want to talk a little bit or have some questions regarding the rollover on the ground.
Does anybody have questions?
I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So congratulations on the successful site visit last year. And for the fabulous compliance work that you're, you and your team shepherd. I did notice in the memo mentioned that our instruction was considered an area of weakness. And I just wanted to hear a little bit more about what the response in terms of training or supports or revisions are in pla-, in place to make that, to improve the instruction.
Okay, so Anya's referring to CLASS, which is a child or teacher-student interaction assessment tool that we use. And the, one of the low areas that we had and typically in the nation is instructional support. One of the things that we did for our pre-service training was to bring in class trainers with specific focus on instructional supports. And because we recognize that observing, assessing, and planning is important in teachers providing those supports, we also provided training, teaching strategies gold. And classroom management continues to come up in terms of behaviors in the classroom. So Sharon talked about also implementing and providing a training on second step. So we were able to incorporate that into our mid-service training that just happened in February. And then Sharon can speak a little more to what's actually happening in the classrooms.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So since my arrival last summer, we, I have engaged the school instructional team to really start diving into our data and our performance and, and collecting additional observational data about what's going on in the classroom and how we're, how we're using assessments. And basically, and this instructional team and myself have been leading all of the teachers and staff in really learning to use the data to inform our instruction, to really find the stories in the data that will help to guide our instruction. So we've had several data dives this year and lots of analysis around the responses to the data with the CIT team. And all of that has led us to determine certain priorities that we need to work on immediately and then to use towards long-term planning. So we're actually currently working on a strategic plan, which you'll get to, will be presented before the end of this school year to you. And that will give you some more details about some of the strategies and goals that we're working on. But just in the short term this year, that our data, our data told us that we need to focus a little bit more on how we're using assessment in the classroom, teachers' comfort level with data and using data to inform instruction. So we have immediately started working on that, bringing in training around class, but also around teaching gold strategies, which is the major assessment tool that we use. And then providing opportunities for the teachers to really work with that data and respond to it and start thinking about how they can utilize it to inform their instruction. So that has been ongoing. We also, our, our data also told us that we needed to focus on certain foundational skills in terms of kindergarten readiness, some literacy skills, particularly phonemic and phonological awareness showed up. So we have done some workshops with teachers and brought in some tools and strategies to help them, to help support them in teaching phonemic and phonological awareness in the classroom. Also, there was data that showed us that we could do more to support fine motor development for our students. Some of our students really needed support in that area. So we did some, brought in some tools and did some workshops on that. And we're starting to see some of those tools being used in the classroom as well. Social-emotional learning is always something that is a priority in early childhood classrooms. And our data has traditionally sho-, historically shown us that we need to focus on that. We are continuing to do so. We have a program called Conscious Discipline that we have been working with and continue to work with. But as Katrina said, we also brought in second step, which is used throughout the district and is best practice for a curriculum in a trauma-informed classroom. And we have started a pilot in the full-day Head Start classrooms this year of actually implementing that in, in, in the classroom. And that is just getting going, but the teachers are really liking it and saying the children are responding well. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, some of the things that we've been focusing on this year. And we're going to continue to build upon all of this going forward. Okay? Any others?
And suffice to say, the combination of deep dives into the assessment and then the data walks, basically, that the staff here are doing, haven't occurred over many, many years. So it's a, it's a really exciting moment to leverage data and information to make improvements.
I will add, I mean, it is exciting to watch the staff engage and to start to notice the stories that they're seeing. And to real, I think at first, when I started all of this, they were kind of like, oh, it's all the data. She's data crazy. But, but it's really, it's, it helps us to meet our children and understand what their specific needs are and so we can support them better. And I think everybody's getting just a little bit more comfortable with that. And we're seeing, starting to see it play out in this instruction.
Just want to comment that again, I really appreciate, again, in the world of early childhood, it's built in that we measure the whole child, right? The social-emotional piece, the fine motor, you know, physical, I mean, it's, it's, it's all there. And I think what happens, so then, I think we do really well, and then they hit the K-12 system, and then we kind of pull the, the social-emotional piece, right? We stop measuring that, and then we just focus on the cognitive. And of course, if you don't, if you pull away that, that social-emotional piece, then we're gonna lose the cognitive piece. And then we've talked about this before, we have this, you know, you know, this, this issue with, you know, so-called kindergarten readiness. I honestly think our kids are kindergarten-ready coming out of JEH and a lot of our, you know, programs. I think the issue is that we need to find a way to, again, make, make the connection, right? Between pre-K and K. I know, I mean, the, ASB offers an opportunity with the kids' assessment, which I think we're, we're looking at adopting next year, which again, kind of helps bring back kindergarten to what it used to be and it kind of bring, brings back that social-emotional piece. It's a bit hard to implement as with any assessment, but it is, it has this observational piece and it has this social-emotional piece as well that really, again, has been missing for so long in American education in general. So, I mean, I'm looking forward to, you know, how that, you know, pans out. But again, it's, it's critical that we really try to make that connection between, you know, pre-K and kindergarten in order for kids to have improved outcomes, as a whole, as whole children in our community.
And I think if we do move to implement kids next year, it will be helpful for us as well because I think it correlates pretty well with the teaching gold strategies and that it covers more domains of development. And we'll be able to track more than just the reading readiness, but really focus on the development of the whole child going forward to kindergarten. And it'll be easier to assess how we're doing.
I, I had a couple of follow-up questions. And I appreciate the depth of your response to the original data. I'm curious if folks have given any feedback in terms of movement that they've felt in their own instructional practice or seen in terms of the impact of their instructional practice from?
The teachers?
Mm-hmm.
I think, I mean, it varies. Everyone's on their own journey and trying to deal with this, learning to, to work with data. I've had, there've been a lot of excitement. We were really excited to take a look at the growth from the fall checkpoints to the winter checkpoints. And we just had those at the beginning of March, the winter checkpoints came through. And I did see, you know, I had several teachers come up to me and say, I can, I'm starting to really see how, I'm starting to get this, I'm starting to see how it's moving. And I, you know, teachers who are really embracing somewhat like this curriculum, the Michael Hegarty curricular tools that we brought in for phonemic and phonological awareness, really just really watching that data and excited to see it when it moves and questioning, questioning when it's not moving as much as they want and then stopping and thinking, okay, how can I shift that? What, what changes can I make? So I, for the, for the most, I mean, there's, people, all teachers move and develop at a little bit different rate, just like all of us. But overall, I'm seeing engagement. And the teachers at my school are passionate, they love the children, they want everyone to do well. And they're always, always working to improve student outcomes, so.
And I have one last question. And that is, how have these shifts been communicated with parents? And how have parents been engaged?
Parents, probably not enough, honestly. I think, I have had some meeting, I had a big meeting. Did you want to talk about? She's gonna talk to you about policy council, and that, that's important. I had a meeting with the community, with Opal, a community, nice meeting in December where we really went through the data in depth. I recently did a presentation to a parent committee meeting about the plans for the strategic plan, and some of that relates back to the data. But in fact, you know, taking them through the data, I haven't found the opportunity to do that yet. And that's an edge of growth for me in terms of trying to figure out how to share this, this practice and this change in practice with the families.
Thank you.
Through our policy council, we do our self-assessment work and share information in terms of training, get their input on trainings that they would like to participate in and for classroom staff too. So from those meetings, we have participation.
Just one more observation I have from some of the stories that our colleagues are telling. When the teachers have gone through the professional learning opportunities where there's gallery walks and their data, you know, around the gym and their, what Sharon has expressed to me is a sort of some really important aha moments. And it's a, you know, the, the way we improve our practice is to understand what we're doing and so that we can actually change our practice. And so the, again, the, the rapid use of data in an environment that hasn't been so data-rich over the years, I give a lot of credit to our educators, who have really spent a lot of time and, and a lot of learning time. And we're just, we're just nine months in. And so we've got a lot more work to do. But it's just to the, it's to the credit of the educators to really jump forward and see, see themselves in a mirror, even, you know, whether, whether you love the data or not, so that you could actually think about where improvements might occur.
I just wanted to say thank you. I definitely, the, the feel is different. I know that there are some major challenges. But when you walk through the hallways, it just feels like there's a better connection with the rest of our district. I think a good example, and I want to thank Dr. Green for considering our JEH Center for Black History Month. You know, you walk down the hallways and before, that, that connection might have not been made. Or this is like the first time where there's like pictures of black history. And I feel like the teachers are welcoming that, that they really feel like they're part of our district and not a separate, you know, a separate entity, which perhaps sometimes they felt it was. And I just wanted to thank you. And thank you, Katrina, for your long nights that you spent here. I know probably past what I feel comfortable seeing you here. But thank you so much for just your dedication and the incredible amount of work that it takes to, to put this application together. And wishing you much luck for the continuation, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your noticing, observations, and support.
So we have to do the roll call vote for?
Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillpern?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. And now our next, now we have some discussion items. The first being the review of the five-year capital plan and requests for proposal for 2019 summer capital projects.
We have updated the five-year capital project recommendation. And it was mainly because of changes in the condition of some of our buildings in the district. Some things that were prioritized as in high priority. The other things that have kind of subsumed it, if you will. And so those have been reflected in the recommendations that were made. And what I also want to talk about is that we received the submission for the 2019 capital bid, project bid on the 12th of March. And the total amount of submitted by the lowest qualified bidder was 1.5 million. This amount is about half a million dollars higher than what was appropriated for capital project this year. What was appropriated, if I will, just know was a million, 25,000. So that's, that's about over half a million dollars more than what was appropriated. And the recommendation that, that we're proposing to the board is that we do two of the secure entrances, Lincolnwood Roads, as well as the, the associated asbestos abatement in the construction area. And then also, we're proposing two asbestos project to be included with that. And one is at Kanglab, which we need some, some martiniated base, abatement in a classroom. And then also Washington Elementary School, the boiler room. The boiler there, it's challenging, it's the original boiler that's been in there. And it needs to have work done to it, except the boiler's encased in asbestos, which is not unusual back then when, when the boiler was installed. Back in the days, they used asbestos, especially in boilers, because they're non-fragile. So in case of a spark, it makes it harder for, for it to light up. So those are the things that we are recommending. Even with those recommendations, it's still $39,000 more than what the appropriation is. What we are proposing is that we take, because we have to do those two additional projects, we really cannot wait till next year, is to take that $39,000 from the 2020 appropriation for capital. Now, what I also want to get into, if the board's pleasure is to do the three secure entries, there are two options that I would, I would like to propose that we've, we've talked about in the administration to be able to do those three. One is to, to pay for the addition of a million dollars out of the 2020 appropriation. So, yeah, so we'll have less money to spend in So, yeah, so we'll have less money to spend in 2020 for additional projects. That's one option. The other option requires a bit of creativity on our part, which is to do some refunding of refunding and refinancing of one of our bonds, the 2009 Series A bonds that we issued back then. The way it typically works is when you issue non-taxable bonds, you have a minimum of 10 years after the issue date to be able to do, to recall it, which is refunding. And with the 2009 Series A bond, we actually have the ability to be able to do that in December. So, if we were to go ahead and do that refunding, it'll give us an additional 5.2 million. We'll be able to do this and we'll be able to do other projects that are present in the district over the next three years.
Questions?
Thank you Raphael and thanks for, I think, probably usurping our questions about what options we have based on, and I guess I want to thank the Lincolnwood community for some very creative ideas, you know, that I think in part, we've been, other folks have been talking about those too, but it's good to see that we're, we're all kind of trying to think creatively because I think, I know everyone here wants to fulfill our commitment vis-à-vis the referendum and getting the double door entries at all of the rest of our schools and we also want to continue to be solid financial stewards. Based on what you just said, I think my comment would be, why would we not do both of those things? And I say that because to the first piece, I see it as a cash flow issue. We have to do all three of these double door entries in the, in the five-year plan you presented doing Orrington and the next year because that would, the 1,025,000 set aside would come available. The projects themselves, I'm assuming are going to straddle both fiscal years in terms of the completion.
Since we're on cash basis accounting, in actuality, the payment will be made in 2020.
Yeah.
Because the new fiscal year starts on July 1st. The project commences on June 12th and with a completion date of, I believe, the 20th of August. So, to keep with our financial, the financial system that we use in the district, cash basis accounting, the cash will not come due until 2020.
So, I don't, yeah, I don't think we have any inconsistency here. We're talking about actually funding projects that need to get done in the timeframe of the summer and still would be paid for in both fiscal years. So, we're not even, you know, kind of going beyond what we had expected to spend. It's just, it's not in keeping with the way we have traditionally done things because we, but those monies, that 1,025, will be allocated next year. We were just saying we're going to pay and we'll pay for it next year. We'll pay the $500,000 for Orrington next year, correct? As you're saying through cash? In fact, we'll pay all of it next year.
Yes.
We're just going to have some of, a million of it from this year and then, you know, that will carry over. So, in my mind, it's a non-issue. I also think we should look at the, at the refinancing of bonds just because it's a smart thing to do in this, in this economic climate and it's also a smart thing to do to get these things done as quickly as possible. Obviously, the first priority being for the safety of our students and our families, but financially, it's a smart thing to do. Costs are escalating, especially in construction and we've seen that with the estimates, you know, that we've gotten through years. So, that's all I'd say.
I just want to underscore the discipline of resources from the referendum and it's what Raphael just said, you just said this as well Candace, that we have 1,025,000 a year available to do capital projects. And so, we want to just stay within those lanes so that we're not overspending beyond the 1,025 and what's recommended would actually allow us to do that and still stay fiscally prudent.
I do have a minor question related to that, those overages. So, a question and a request. The question is AE, you refer to AE in here. What does that mean? You know, I'm assuming it's...
Oh, AE is Architecture and Engineering. I'm sorry.
That amount in each of the, you know, years, is that also, because that would be in, that would be in addition to the 1,060 for this year, for this year, that you're saying there's an additional 75,000, so it takes it up to 1.1 million.
Those are actually included. These, for this year, the amount, if you look at the, if you look at the...
I'm just looking at the capital plan on page 234.
Right, so...
1.064 plus 74.
Right, plus 74, yes.
There's a grand total line right below it.
Yeah, it's 1.1.
Yes, yes, 74. So, it'll be 1,138, yes.
Okay, so it's, it's more than 30,000.
Yes, it will be.
It's actually 100 and something thousand.
1,138, 860, yes.
But ostensibly, if we're taking, if we're looking at this as a 2,050 total, then we can expend those amounts from that 2 million. We'll still have some additional that could be whatever high priority corrections, more the masonry, small projects that would need to be done.
That's correct. So, in keeping with that, if we, my, if we, if we're thinking that way, my recommendation would be the jobs that we bid out already, that we received bid submissions for, which includes guardrail and also some asbestos work at Nichols and Willard, we should probably just include that in there and it'll be 1.1 million. Because my fear is if we were to wait till next year to go out again and bid those two, those three additional projects, we may come back with a higher amount than what we already have right now. What has been submitted right now is hard numbers that is good for 60 days, so I'm saying we might as well take it.
So, you want to move the Orrington, main entrance vestibule, the Oakton School guardrails and which other project?
And the couple of other projects, which will be Willard asbestos.
The Willard asbestos, what about the Dawes?
And Nichols asbestos.
The Nichols, okay.
So, those will be the two additional ones, will be the Willard asbestos and Nichols asbestos.
All funded the same way?
Yes.
And again, you're not saying this, but I just want to stay anal and disciplined here, which is that it's with 1.025 from this year and 1.025 from next year and the projects happen to overlap because of when they start and when they end, but we're still staying true to our commitment of 1.025 each year.
And also just to further clarify, so what that means then is that next year, we wouldn't necessarily be looking at bidding out additional projects over the summer unless we utilize the option that you were talking about, about...
We actually will be, it will be for smaller amount because...
Whatever the difference is.
Yes, it will be whatever the difference is, yes.
Unless we go through the option of...
The refunding of the callable bonds, yes.
Is there any downside to doing the refunding?
Honestly, we've done some really serious analysis. There is no downside. For starters, interest rates have actually stalled. They've actually started going down instead of going up again because the feds have made the decision that inflation is no longer a threat. So, the Fed rates are now going up, so interest rates are coming down. And with that compared to how much we paid for those bonds 10 years ago, we'll be able to save money on interest rate. So, there is no, really no downside. It also allows us some of our building infrastructure that needs the TLC for us to work on it. The longer we take it out, the more degraded those buildings are going to be. So, if we can get in and try to fix that, in the long run, it will actually save us money. And one additional point I would like to make is the way the refunding will be structured, we don't take on any more additional debt than what we are. What we do is we, we use some of the money that we have in the debt service that is sitting there that we can only use for, for something just like this, for refunding, we use that to pay down the interest rate that we will pay to the bondholders. So, it's a win-win situation the way it looks.
So, in other words, it's not going to affect our ability, because right now, I can't remember offhand, what year are we able to...
We're encumbered till 2036.
And so, this won't affect that?
It wouldn't impact that at all.
So, and that's an important point that based on decisions of past administrations and boards, we are encumbered with our debt service extension base through 2036. So, the good suggestion of going out to bond, we really don't have the ability to go out to bond until 2036 and it's been a constraint that we've faced over the last five years. And so, so what this does is there's a moment where we have a callable bond that we can call and recoup those resources, use some money that we have in our debt service and then be able to leverage some monies to do some important projects. It will be about 5.2 million. It won't extend that 2036 date and it won't add extra costs.
And it'll actually give us the ability to do more than what's on this five-year plan.
Yes.
And I also want to clarify, if we could, that this money is specifically for capital where, that it's not 5.2 million that could be used in other ways?
Yes. So, what it is, we, since we're still using our DCEP, our debt service limit, we are, what we are doing is we're issuing a non-taxable bond. When you issue a non-taxable bond, the yield that you pay is lower because the investors are getting a break on their taxes. So, with that being said, we can only use it for capital. And an additional limit on that is that we can also only, we have three years to use the money. Because if you, if we, if we kept the money longer than three years, we run into an IRS rule, which is called an arbitrage, which means we're selling bonds to make money on the side, which we can't do, that's with the non-taxable bonds.
Gotcha. So, it's money that has to be used on capital projects and within three years?
Yes.
And thank you very much, exclusively on capital projects.
I would just, sorry, one other request. So, as, because we kind of got in this situation about the estimating, partially because of scope, but partially because maybe we haven't necessarily factored in cost growth. So, I would ask, ask the question of in the current five-year plan, these estimates are based on today's dollars, correct?
Unfortunately, not. The only way, the only way we can actually find out how much future projects, are you talking about future projects?
No, I'm talking about, let's just take, for example, in the five-year plan, we have an estimate that in year 2022, we would remove wire glass at Willard for 20,000. Is that 20,000 an estimate of what it would cost today or have we levered in an average growth rate of the CPI or some kind of proxy so that at least we're factoring in some, some growth? Because it's going to be more than what it costs today.
Based on my experience, the unfortunate thing is until you actually go out to bid, there's no way to know definitively how much things are going to cost.
Yeah, Candace is asking if we have a best estimate based on the best prices, can we also factor in?
Just a model. A model of, you know, we're assuming there's going to be 3% growth a year, we're assuming one and a half, whatever the CPI, something that we're at least factoring in some, because it's, it's very unlikely that these numbers would go down and our estimate today is based on what we know today. So, I just think we should build that model factoring in some increases in cost and then we'll have to still get real estimates when we get closer to it.
I agree with you and I think one way we also do that is since we revise this every year, as we get closer to the time, our numbers get better, we have a better idea as to what we spent in the past. So, in addition to doing that, when we go out to bid next year and we get the actual numbers, it'll give us a trigger as to what is likely in the out years. So, we will do both.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you for the suggestion. That's really, really helpful. It will mean that sort of the bottom line on some of these charts, we'll have to draw the line higher and we may not get to some of these projects based on the escalation of costs.
Well, I just think the more realistic we can be, the better we are in communicating, going out with just realistic assumptions.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Absolutely, it's a suggestion.
So, just then to, so we, I believe we vote on this at the next meeting. No, we're voting on it today?
Voting on it today?
We are, okay. So, we need to, I guess, figure out what we're voting on. Oh, you do have it already, so...
I happen to have a proposed motion.
But I just want to make, before we, well, okay, go ahead.
I had a question in the document, and I'm sorry, I can't find it. I had it pulled off a second ago, but there's the 10% contingency one. It's zeroed out on the 20...
For this year.
I see, okay.
The reason why that is zeroed out for this year, we actually have actual numbers, which is kind of what I was alluding to. So, the price that were given to us in the submitted bid include a contingency.
Okay.
So, if we have to go over, it's all in there already.
I see, okay. And I also wanted to, I was just curious, we had originally worried that the Orrington bid would be closer to 700,000, but it's...
I think it was Lincolnwood that we were worried was going to be there.
I thought it was Orrington because of ramp or that was needed.
We had the number for Orrington last month, if you remember.
Yeah, it was the Lincolnwood that was still out.
Lincolnwood has a major reconfiguration of the front.
Okay. Gotcha. Well, let me look at this again. I was going to say it came in 200,000 less, but, oh, it came in about 100,000. So, what do we think is the reason for the variance?
In Lincolnwood?
Yeah, in the actual...
What I projected, I said it was going to be closer to half a million dollars. It's what I said when we met a month ago. I said about a million, a half a million dollars. And the architect said, Danny, he thought it was going to be closer to 600,000. So, he was right.
I'm sorry, I had 700,000 in my memory, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you want to go ahead and read the motion?
All right, so I moved that the Board of Education approved the proposed 2019 summer capital projects as presented, the Lincolnwood reconfiguration of the main entrance to school to create a double vestibule, secure entrance, Bessie Road secure, secure double vestibule entrance, the Lincolnwood asbestos abatement, Bessie Road's asbestos abatement, King Lab asbestos abatement in the classroom, Washington School asbestos abatement in the boiler, in the boiler room, as well as the 2020 listed projects from Orrington, the double vestibule secure entrance, the Nichols Middle School asbestos abatement, the Willard School asbestos abatement and the Oakton School mezzanine guardrails.
And Orrington asbestos abatement and the...
And, yeah, the second.
And the Orrington asbestos abatement too.
In the construction area.
In the construction area.
The construction area.
Is that correct? Was that, did I list everything that you, okay. Second?
Second.
Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hailpern?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. All right, thank you. And thank you again to the community members who came and I do want to thank Raphael and your team for coming back with the creative suggestions and particularly, I think, hopefully at the next Finance Committee meeting, we can hear more about what steps we need to take on the refunding the bonds to, we can generate those additional funds for capital projects. That would obviously be excellent. So, thank you for exploring that.
We surely wish there'd be more callable bonds all the time, but the next set of callable bonds aren't until the early 2020s and so it's not going to happen every day.
Okay, on to, so now this is our first, our only true discussion item is the draft school calendar for 2020, 2021. Beatrice?
So, the calendar that is up for discussion is for the 2021 school year. It currently follows the same pattern in terms of days of instruction, the same types of holidays that we've had traditionally in the past. In terms of alignment with 202, it does keep us aligned with 202 for our vacations and holidays. However, I know that 202, as they are for their, their calendar this school year, they're going to be starting approximately three days earlier than us, our students will be. And I believe they have something similar proposed for their 2020, 2021 calendar where they will be starting at least three days earlier than us. There's a possibility that may be a little more than that, but we, they don't have that approved yet. So, I know that that in, for the last several years, there have been conversations about that and whether or not our start date needs to be aligned with District 202. We are not proposing that we start that much earlier. One of the things we know from working with our DEC colleagues is they have a concern with starting earlier for a couple of reasons. One is with regards to when the first payroll will be and how many weeks... One is with regards to when the first payroll will be and how many weeks teachers could potentially work without being paid. And the second one is just that with our multiple facilities, we have a lot of things that are going on in the summer and will the classrooms be ready to go? But also the, the temperature in the classrooms on some of the third floors of our buildings, especially our middle school buildings, it gets particularly warm and uncomfortable. So there's been a concern whether that's the best learning environment for children and whether that's the best work environment for teachers. So we are not proposing at this point in time that we start earlier than the fourth Monday, which has been pretty consistent in terms of when we've been starting school. So I don't know if you have any other particular questions. The one thing also just to point out is that this particular school year, there'll be a presidential election and so we still have a waiver from the last time and because it was a five-year waiver and so we would anticipate taking November 3rd as a full day of school improvement. It would be a non-instructional day for students. There would then be no half-day, half-day early release that month. And this is also to address concerns that many of our schools are pulling sites and there's been questions in terms of is that the safest environment for children on that particular type of day and especially for a presidential election when typically there are more people coming out.
So, and just to clarify too, we've known about the start dates not aligning, but other major, like spring break and winter break, like those all continue to align?
They will continue to align. I mean, the only thing that then that does is it, it also pushes their, their end date. They will get out earlier than us.
Right.
But the, the spring recess and the winter recess, we do, they're still the same.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have two questions and they might turn into additional questions, so. Why does the high school set the calendar and we follow and not the other way around?
So I wouldn't say that they necessarily set the calendar and that we follow. I think it's been, that both boards have expressed the desire to have them align as much as possible, at least in previous years and similar. I think we've come to a point where we recognize that we may not have the same start dates, but that with regards to the vacations and holidays, to try and be in alignment, just because while the families, it's two different districts, the families are-
Sure.
-community residents and it makes it easier for a variety of reasons. So I wouldn't say that they necessarily, you know, dictate and we follow. I think we try and work collaboratively and so to the point that we've still been able to keep the spring recess and winter recess, those the same as well as the holidays. I will say that I think the high school has a different need and interest in terms of starting earlier and that is so that they can get their finals in prior to winter recess for their students. That's a real need that they have for their school community. So I think they're trying to keep our calendars as much, as much aligned as possible while also serving the needs of their school community.
And yet, we're, we're really not following the high school here and we're, we're saying our first day of, for 2020, the institute should start on August 20th and the school doesn't start till the 24th of August and we don't believe we should come earlier. And, and our educators have actually very clearly said and they're right, that our buildings are hot and it's hard to-
Sure.
It's hard to regulate and we're not gonna overnight with our cap, even with the slight addition of capital, we're not gonna be able to air condition all our buildings.
Um, that makes sense. The other question I have is more of just, I think we've talked about this in the past, but this particular year, it seems to be particularly gruesome to end school the Monday after a holiday weekend, or the day after a holiday weekend. And it seems like there's just one day, if we could figure out how not to take it off during the school year, that it could-
That's an interesting thing.
Yeah.
So-
That's a, it's a good point and, and so noted and we can look at it, but just, it's just counting the days that, you know, and it's hard.
We have to have-
I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
Go ahead. We probably have the same one because we've probably had this exact same conversation.
Probably, but go ahead, take it.
The big V?
Yeah.
Yes. What about Veterans Day? Because that would give us, you know, one day earlier, we're already, we are, especially in a year where we're looking to have a non-attendance day on the 3rd because of the elections. Is that something that you considered at all?
I think it's certainly something that can be considered. And as long as the, you as our board doesn't, wouldn't have an issue with that holiday not being aligned with the high school, I will go back and I can certainly ask them. I know that in past years, that was a non-negotiable for them.
I don't know if it still is or not, but if, if, if our board doesn't have a problem
taking or having a school day on a day when 202 has a holiday, if, if that alignment is, if it's okay not to have that alignment, then I think that's definitely something we can consider.
We're, we're also hedging a bet that we won't have any climate change-
Right.
That's extensive enough to close school. And so, and that one, we, we, we have to reserve that right, just to meet our days, of course.
For sure, but I, you know, I'm glad you brought this up because this is something that I've always, you know, for us to, by design, end on a Monday or in this case, a Tuesday after a holiday weekend. I think, you know, I think we can plan better than that. I will, again, you know, if we look at November, if we take both Election Day and Veterans Day off, there's only one full week of instruction-
Yeah.
-in November. I think, I know that in the past, there's been some reticence, you know, to, to take the day off because, because it might seem disrespectful to our veteran community. I think there's a way that we can work with our veterans community to make that a meaningful day of instruction and remembrance. And then it would also allow us to have a better calendar. So I think it's something worth exploring. I mean, ideally, if the high school would be open to that, I think that's great, but I don't know that I, I don't think it should be prohibitive that they have to agree to take it off for us to consider exploring it. I don't know if others feel differently.
Um, I don't feel differently about that, but I think another option would be to even just pushing the entire calendar a week forward. And if we're already not going to be in alignment with the high school and have the weather issues be minimized as well, I mean, August and September and Evanston are beautiful months and so, and June is not. And so I don't know if, you know, there's much difference between being misaligned for three days versus eight days. I don't know what that cost is.
So would you propose an August 31st start date? Is that what you're saying? I just want to make clear, so pushing it to August 31st?
Yeah, I mean, that's why you have the whole week of-
I would just want to make-
It's just another Monday, I guess it's the other problem though, is on, it would just be another-
I would just want to make sure that we engage families that have children in both districts who maybe are relying on the older child for childcare and, you know, eight days versus three days of coverage. I, I, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I would definitely make, want to make sure that we get stakeholder voice before we-
It is different when 65 kids are out of school while the high school kids are in school versus the opposite.
Yeah. I would say the same thing. I think it's, I would love to see that happen. I think it does open up more stakeholder, that we should get stakeholder input-
Right.
Because you also have camps that, you know, if, unless they realigned, you could potentially have camps that end earlier and then you have open time for families. Now, could they adjust? Sure, but we, it would work, you're looking at, it's something we'd have to-
Basically, it's an extra week of-
Yeah, you just have to, we'd have to plan because it may adjust our partners who are providing childcare and/or camps in the summer to also adjust differently.
And these are all considerations right now, this is a draft.
This is a draft, correct.
This is a draft, you're not voting, it'll come back, well, it's supposed to come back in April for an approval as a draft. It would remain as a draft until next year. So I'm, I'm not sure in that quick turnaround time, how much stakeholder engagement we can get, but we will certainly do our best to look at some options and maybe bring forth a couple more consideration.
And we did have this survey before, you know, in terms of pushing late, start date later, so maybe even re-
We did. The other-
Mm-hmm.
And I think the other thing to consider is that, you know, we could also maybe start on a Wednesday. I know educators have often said it'd be nice to start on a Wednesday, give kids a couple days to get acclimated and then have them start the full week, so we can-
Educators' first day back would be the 24th and then children on the 26th.
So we can, we can look at some options.
Interesting options, yeah.
If we're not, we don't-
There's options.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And that, updates and upcoming work, does anybody have any updates to share? What do we think on time? Can we take a half an hour to go back into closed session? How do we?
We're, we're at your service, so we're happy to serve or, or, we're happy to go back.
Is that a, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so can we, do we need to make a motion to re-charge it?
We'll just go back and make a second.
Same motion.
But just to say it for negotiations. Yeah.
Yeah. I move, I move that the Board of Education move into closed session today, March 18th, 2019, to discuss negotiations.
Second. Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Gilpern?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?[1779.12]